Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting back to order after recess and start our public hearing. First of all, on the proposed FY 2015-16 budget. And Mr. Crumpton, do you have anything to say to start with?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I've said enough.
Okay. I guess for those of you here tonight, and we're kind of almost at capacity in this room, we also have the Wicker Room available for people to wait in comfort, and we're streaming the meeting live in there. So as we go through the public comments, as I get to the end of the list, I'll be asking if there's anybody in the Wicker Room to start moving this way so that they can have a chance to speak also. And we'll be following our county policy for public comments that we have for our general meetings, and that is to try to limit your comments to three minutes, and the attorney will be keeping time. So I guess about two minutes and forty-five seconds, she'll call time and let you know that you're winding down to give everybody a chance to speak. So with that, I will be entertaining those that would like to speak in favor of the proposed budget. If you would come up to the microphone and give your name and address. Okay, come on up and give your name and address.
My name is Irene Smith. I live at 519 Walnut Drive in Sanford.
Would you... Yeah, you go ahead. I'm sorry. I did not make that clear, Ms. Smith. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
My name is Irene Smith. I reside at 519 Walnut Drive in Sanford. I am a property owner in Lee County. First of all, I would like to thank John Crumpton for his lucid presentation in today's Chamber of Congress meeting. He succeeded in making a complicated subject accessible to those of us who were there. The subject of taxes is more topical around here than the hot-button issues of abortion, same-sex marriage, and gun control. A couple of years ago, the Sanford Herald published a letter of mine in which I said that we expected a lot from our government and we should be willing to pay for it. An Irish gentleman threw a punch at me in the public library. I ducked, he missed, he went away mad. This board has shown great foresight and courage in presenting this budget. The litany of tax and spend has begun, but I would like to propose a different song: Tax and Invest. We have cut taxes and starved our educational system, our infrastructure, our courts, and our services. We need to invest in our community, our children, ourselves. It is the right thing to do. You have my vote. Thank you.
Anyone else speak in favor of the budget?
Andy Bryan, Super Ten Lee County Schools, 15008 Winter Locken Drive, Sanford. Commissioners, County Manager, first I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity last week to discuss the budget and, on behalf of the Board of Education, the opportunity to share ideas and thoughts about the direction of our school district. I just tonight would like to reiterate some of the things that we discussed last week and the importance that we feel to impact in our school district in a very positive way. As I stated last week, our school district is committed to a very simple vision, a goal for all students to graduate with more than a high school diploma. We believe that we can support that most readily by having the very best teachers and educators within our school district. And those teachers and educators, certainly compensation makes a difference to them. And because of our geographical proximity to numerous counties who pay more in supplement, we certainly are grateful for a potential opportunity to increase our supplement, to retain our very best teachers, and to attract the very best teachers overall. In our meeting last week, we also outlined some of the other things that are important to us within this budget in reference to restructuring our academically-intellectually-gifted program, to give more support for that, to provide more support for our Avid program, advancement via individual determination. Two of our students, Alexis Fox and Addie Gonzalez, I thought did a great job presenting to you the benefits of the Avid program and what can be gained from that. And also, Ms. Jill Britt, a teacher at Deep River Elementary School, provided an overview of intervention teachers and what they can do for average students. We are promoting that idea of post-secondary educational opportunities for our students. Programs like our Central Carolina Works and our National Academy Foundation Career Academies provide opportunities for students that are unique and give our students a competitive advantage. As I lay all that out there for you and all the other things that we offer for students, we are very grateful for the opportunity to have this conversation, the County Managers' proposed budget, and very grateful for the opportunity for your considerations for our schools. Thank you.
I'm Lynn Smith. My address is 1502 Gormley Circle. It's my pleasure to serve as Chairman of the Lee County Board of Education, and I certainly want to thank the Board and Madam Chairwoman, or is that proper address? Will I do? It's a pleasure to be here. You know, it's been a funny year in Lee County. We've spent a whole lot of our time talking about fracking and waste, coal ash disposal, and the obvious effects on our natural resources, as well we should have. But it's probably now time to turn our attention to another natural resource that we can do something about, and that's our children. Our children are our future. In the not-too-distant future, they could be sitting up there and they will be standing here, and we owe it to them to give them a proper education, and that's incumbent on your Board and the Board of Education, and it's why we submitted our budget. I would like to commend Mr. Crumpton on his presentation today. I thought he did a superb job presenting the budget, and we certainly appreciate his efforts. And our budget's fairly simple. We can talk about three things. The first thing is a raise in the supplement pay for our teachers. It's been 2005 since they've had a raise in supplement pay, and I think they're well overdue. I think we owe it to our long-term experienced teachers. And recently, our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Printley, Wendy Mottley, was quoted as saying that she feels like she's married to Lee County's school system. And we have teachers like that who are supporting our children. We've got to support them monetarily. The second thing we ask for is increase in classroom teachers, and I think our success is going to be directly related to the teachers that we employ, and we really appreciate the support in the County Managers' budget presentation. And thirdly is our capital, and we all agree that our buildings have to be maintained properly, and we would appreciate your consideration of this budget. I think it's a simple budget. It's a reasonable budget, and I think that's what we need to sustain what we're doing in our school system, and I do appreciate your consideration of our budget request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Whitaker, 1636 Everett Valley Road, Sanford, North Carolina, 27330. And I am one of those teachers that's married to Lee County. Been teaching in Lee County for 28 years, and I was fortunate enough that I did not have to make a choice of whether to stay in Lee County or to go to a different county. The 1% increase supplement for teachers will make a difference in whether we lose our quality teachers or not. Just the 1% may not seem like much to you, but it'll make a difference in whether you can feed your family or whether you have to take that second job. I've been a mentor for many years in Lee County, and we do a good job in recruiting teachers. We get quality teachers, we train them, we bring them into the fold, and then they have to decide, do I stay here or do I go where I could provide more for my family, where I can have a better living? And all they have to do is cross the county line. All the surrounding counties are giving more support, so I would like for you to pass this budget and give that 1% to the teachers because I think they really deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Hall, 1202 Wilkins Drive, Sanford. And good evening to all of you. I'm here on behalf of Family Promise. Family Promise started in 2011, and it is something that is near and dear to my heart because I work with a lot of homeless people. Family Promise has struggled, as all nonprofits have struggled lately, and we're doing our best to get outside donations and do fundraisers, as is every nonprofit. And so I'm here in support of the budget because any funds that you have given us are very much needed, and that goes along with the school system too, because these children are in school. Last year, we helped 23 families get back into their houses, and so they are contributing members of Lee County now. And there is always a waiting list. We work with four families at a time, and we have a waiting list of about 10 after that to work with. So it's a continuing problem in this area, and so we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Hi, I'm Paula Lake from 1019 Walker Road, and I'm here to support the Avid curriculum. I know you had two students come last year, last week, and tell you about their perspective. I'm here as a 28-year teacher in Lee County Schools. The Avid curriculum, I wish I had been here from day one. It's like family in Lee County Schools. It's family for the kids. We provide the necessary skills not only to be academically successful, but also to be career-ready, which will help Lee County. We give the support for these average students to complete rigorous coursework, and Avid supports them through tutorials, strategies, and critical thinking skills. We give them relationships when they come to Lee County Schools from elementary to middle school to high school, so they have that one person there that's like their second mom or dad in Lee County Schools that checks on them constantly. We're the Avid family. And it doesn't stop there. We follow them through every stage of their life, from elementary to middle school to high school. The elective classes are reflective of the demographics of the school, so the percentage of race in each school is also reflected in the Avid elective class. We try to reach first-generation college students. Some of those kids who have never heard anything about college, we take them to college campuses. We expose them to careers that they need by bringing in community speakers who are doctors and lawyers and tell them what it takes to become a doctor or a lawyer. And you can be from Lee County and be a doctor or a lawyer. You can be anything you want to be. So we expose them to everything they need to be successful in college and in careers. Not only is it about college, but it also teaches the soft skills they need. We take them to the retirement homes and teach them about old people. They learn those relationships. We had them to collect can tabs, and we went to the Ronald McDonald House in Durham so that they see what their can tabs do for the children and the parents of the children who are staying in hospitals. We also, in middle schools and high schools and throughout Lee County, we have Avid. This year, we took it to Broadway, and if you ever have the chance, walk into Broadway Elementary. You see the college culture everywhere, from kindergarten through the fifth grade. It's awesome. And so all of those fourth and fifth graders at Broadway get it, and next year, every elementary school in Lee County will have Avid. So it's an excellent program. It follows them all through high school. It helps them be successful, and we are conducting professional development for all of our teachers so that every teacher will be trained in the Avid strategies, and then they can train all of their students, not just the elective, but it will be Avid school-wide, so every student in Lee County can have those Avid strategies and be successful and come back and help the Lee County economy. So I'm asking you, Avid is lifetime achievement, lifelong learning, proven achievement, and we do have proof that it does work, and it will give our students in Lee County a lifelong advantage, so I hope you will support Avid in Lee County Schools.
Hi, my name is Jan Koshentart. I'm at 1406 Winter Locken Drive, and I am a Lee County School teacher. I am speaking in favor of the budget, and in particular, part of the budget that deals with the teacher supplement. One thing I want to tell you that my colleagues told me to convey when they found out I was coming is that we are tired. Fifty-two percent of teachers have a second job, and I suspect that our non-classified staff, our teacher assistants, our bus drivers, that percentage is probably more. North Carolina is getting ready to face a teacher shortage. We're the ninth-most populous state. We're getting ready to hit 10 million people. There's going to be more of demand for education, but over the past five years, the teacher enrollment in college has gone down 27%. Now, if you know markets about supply and demand, we're going to go into a deficit here. As our population grows, there's going to be a demand for education, and we're going to have a shortage of teachers. When that happens, we know that prices tend to rise. I tell you what, I know it's got to be disheartening for our personnel department to go to a job fair and set up a booth beside Wake County Schools. Wake County Schools has a tiered supplement level, and for a beginning teacher with no experience, bachelor's degree, their supplement is more than double ours, and then it goes up from there. Durham, Chatham, Moore, Orange, Cumberland, and Gulfboro County all have higher supplements than Lee County. If we're going to face this teacher shortage, we've got to make sure that Lee County stays competitive, and we've got to increase our local supplement here. Get these teachers here now, get them invested in Lee County before this shortage really hits. I hope that you all have the foresight to do this now. This is a good start. It's a great budget, and I hope that we live up to our county motto, "Committed today for a better tomorrow."
Justin Wilkinson, 822 Gulf Street in Sanford. Good evening. I'm a Lee County native, and I also currently have the privilege of teaching at Lee County High School. This is my seventh year teaching, and I want to begin by expressing my appreciation for the support and funding the county provides to our school system. We're able to provide cutting-edge technology and programs to our students to equip them to be successful, whether they're entering the workforce or pursuing post-secondary opportunities. I am fortunate to be associated with one of these programs, the Lee County High School Academy of Finance. Through partnerships with local business leaders and the National Academy Foundation, we're able to provide our students a rigorous and relevant curriculum augmented with embedded work-based learning experience. The Students' Academy experience lasts all four years of high school. This continuity allows us to form strong relationships with our students and their families. Strong, positive relationships are vital in helping increase our academy students' achievement in all academic areas, but this also helps us better advise them on their future and college plans. In closing, I would like to provide you with a few highlights of what our Academy of Finance students have accomplished this year. First off, we started with 24 freshmen, and they presented to our Advisory Board of local business leaders on financial, basic financial knowledge and preparations. This is amazing for me as a teacher to see my freshmen speaking to business leaders. I get nervous speaking to business leaders, and to see my freshmen doing this, it's a great opportunity, and I know they'll be so much further ahead than I am. But also, each of these 24 students have earned two industry-recognized credentials, the Microsoft Office Specialist Certifications in Word and PowerPoint. And finally, two of our students were just elected by their peers to represent the sophomore class next school year as the Student Government Association Vice President and Secretary-Treasurer. Thank you for what you've done and for your plan to continue to support our students, their families, and the teachers of Lee County.
Vicki Wilkins, 957 South Bay, Sanford. Good evening, Madam Chair, persons, members of the Commission. I appreciate your willingness to let us share with you all this evening, and first of all, I want to thank you for being proactive with the budget that you brought for discussion, for talk, for chatter, for whatever you like to call it, because the bottom line is crystal clear: If you have a society that is not educated, they are doomed to fail. And I don't think there's anybody in this room tonight that would go on record as saying they want to see Lee County be a failure. I think we've done tremendous things in this county, thanks to the help of the County Commissioners, the School Board, and other people who invest and volunteer and give their time and their effort. But I, like many of my colleagues here tonight, understand the frustration of what we go through to recruit and to bring educators in here. And every one of you sitting there tonight wants a highly qualified teacher in every classroom. Now, I'm going to tell you, there are people who are certified in education, just as there are in other professions, but they're not qualified to really do the job. Some people don't have what it really takes to do the job, and because of that, because of the competition that we have around us, we have lost some of those highly qualified educators to other school systems. I know two or three years ago, we had a turnover rate of 17 teachers. That's a lot of positions to fill, and the amount of time and effort that that costs to go out to recruit, then to retain, and then to mentor that teacher, you're looking at anywhere from $15,000 to $18,000. And the country as a whole, we lose billions of dollars a year because educators will tell you, and I can tell you this from experience, when I began in this profession, if we could keep a teacher to 10 years, they were in there. Then sadly, that number dropped. If we could keep an educator to seven years, oh, it's going to get worse. I'm sorry. Then if we could get them to five years. And now, those that we are losing leave with less than three years of experience. And they will tell you the number-one reason they are leaving: wages. And I wish we could all win the lottery. I wish there was a surefire fix, but it is upon us as a society, as a county, to accept the responsibility. Will we cheat our children now and cheat them in their future, or will we step up to the plate? You've got educators who work, you've got people who volunteer. We've got so many things in place and things that you heard Dr. Bryan explaining earlier that we are trying to do. Thank you, ma'am. But we can only do so much with what we have to work with. Thank you so much for bringing this budget.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of the budget? And now I'd like to call on those who would speak in opposition of the budget.
Madam Chair, County Commissioners, County Managers, County Attorney, and concerned citizens, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak tonight, and my name is Jim Womack. I live at 1615 Boone Trail Road in Sanford. I appreciate this opportunity to come and speak about the budget. I have a longer list of things that I've addressed, not knowing we're going to be limited to three minutes tonight, so I'm going to leave that with the secretary so she can have that for the record. I'll synthesize my comments down into about two and a half minutes worth of time. I'd like to begin my remarks by saying I regret not being able to sit with you personally to help you come to grips with the competing priorities as expressed by the County Manager in his budget letter. I would dearly love to do that. Frankly, there's much work that still needs to be done to get this budget back in line with our fiscal priorities and with the realities, the economic realities that we face. On that topic, I was disappointed to see that Commissioners are only scheduled to have one budget work session. I remember two or three years back when I was a sitting Commissioner that we had as many as 15 or so work sessions to try to drill down and find every last nickel that we could to match up to the priorities. I would encourage the Commissioners to do that. Paraphrasing Sir Winston Churchill's famous quote, "You simply cannot tax your way into prosperity," and we should take that to heart. After spending an hour or so looking at the proposed budget, I found eight specific areas that are in my longer letter that I'm going to leave with you to consider, of areas where it was fairly easy to find lower priority matters that you could draw the line under and say, "We don't have to do that this year," or "We can postpone it a year or two." I would encourage you to look at that. If the county's economic base is expected to grow by only 1% or 2%, then you should only allow for a 1% or 2% growth in spending at the current tax rate, not raise taxes. That's just a simple matter of fact. That's what most households do. That's what most people have to do when they're trying to match their budget to their revenues. I'd like to remind the Board of Commissioners and Lee County citizens who are closely following our budget process that today, Lee County has the 33rd highest tax rate in the state of North Carolina, 33 out of 100. We're at 72 cents for each hundred in value. If you weren't aware of this, the median tax rate in the state right now is 66 cents, a full six cents lower than where we are. The average tax rate is even lower than that, at 64 cents per hundred, and it's going down, not up. We're headed in the opposite direction of where the state center of gravity is headed, and it disturbs me, and it should disturb you as well. The average, if we want to grow our economic base in the future, we should be aiming to reduce our rate to those levels. Raising our tax rate to 79 and a half cents would put us in the top 15 of the counties in the state. That includes highly distressed counties like Scotland County, who the County Manager is very familiar with, Northampton County, Edgcombe County, Birdie, Lenore, Richmond, and Columbus Counties. All of those counties are distressed counties, and they are distressed in part in a large measure because their tax rates are too high and they keep them high. Now, they think they're going to tax themselves back, but they're not going to be successful. I encourage you to reconsider where this budget's headed and to try to match the realities to the priorities. Thank you.
Greetings. I'm Frank Thompson, 191 Covet Bridge Lane, Sanford, North Carolina, 27330. You ever heard the statement, "Once a country boy, always a country boy"? Well, you're looking at him. I was born and raised on a farm in Columbus County a long time ago, when everything was rationed during the war, or you grew it yourself. We had stamps to get sugar. We had stamps to get gas. What's that got to do with today? How many of you can raise a garden? There's three or four hands going up. How many of you can milk a cow? There's a few that can do that. What about the rest of you? Where are you going to get it? And what's that got to do with me? For 25 years, I worked in agriculture with a commodity broker out of Charlotte, calling on the major breeders, swine breeders, chicken breeders, turkey breeders, the whole works. So I knew what was happening in the food industry. Are you aware that we just lost one brawler operation to a company in South America? That could happen again. Are you aware that the Chinese have bought Alder Smithville Foods? That could happen also. Now, if it does happen, what's going to happen to you? The Lee County Extension Service has programs to train people how to plant gardens and to do this. Do I think it's going to happen next year? I hope not, but we've got to be ready if and when it does. We cannot afford to lose two people from the staff of the Lee County Extension Service, not in come anywhere close to being ready for catastrophe. Now, what is a catastrophe? I understand in Smithville right now that the Chinese is wanting all of the side meat, and for you ones that don't know, that's all the bacon, shipped to China. What's going to stop them? That concerns me. That concerns me. I like pork chops, and I like chicken. So consider in your budget leaving the staff as it is at our extension. Thank you so much.
That'll be a tough one to follow. Hello, my name is Rule Daybolt, and I live at 2435 South Plank Road in Sanford. I am currently the Chair for the Advisory Council. I am currently the Chair for the Advisory Council for the Cooperative Extension Service here in Lee County. I've had a twenty-year career in the poultry industry, and we have horses, garden, and love to landscape our property. We are asking for your support, as Frank just said, that we need to have a horticulture agent funded, and we need to have the support staff fully engaged to let the people do the work that they can do to deliver the research and good expert advice that our people in the county so greatly need. A horticultural agent would be a big asset. You know, we have a new industry starting up in the county where, you know, wine industry. We're growing grapes in the county. And having, having an expert in this area is just something that we really ought to support. We do have the Master Gardeners Club that does a lot of volunteer work for the Extension Service in this regard. However, you know, they're not the experts, and they need guidance. You know, they're doing a great job, but, and a great job to the extent the hours that they put in is equivalent to about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That's, that's an awful lot out of our volunteers. You know, we, we do need the administrative support to help run the business. And I also wanna point out to you that it is a small percentage of the county's budget to come up with the additional funding. And we do realize, I've been to the legislature to lobby to get funding for our positions. As you know, it is a part of the education budget. And then, once the education budget is set, then the university system decides what we end up with. And that's, that's all been decided and gone through. You know, we've, we've done our job trying to advocate for the Extension Service here in Lee County, but we're here tonight to ask for your support to help fund the positions that we desperately need here in the county. You know, I also wanna point out that surrounding counties here are in the same situation, but those counties are stepping up to help fund the positions and the differences that the state is not coming up with. Thank you very much for your support in the budget.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Chairperson. My name is Celeste Bissell. I live at seventeen fifty-nine Daughery Turn in Sanford. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm an Extension Master Gardener Volunteer, one of those. And I'm speaking on behalf of the other volunteers and also the hundreds of Lee County residents who visit the Extension Center each year to seek assistance with gardening and horticulture problems. In two thousand fourteen, that was over seven hundred citizens who came in. And the Master Gardeners contributed roughly twelve hundred hours, actually a little more than that, to that endeavor and to try to meet their needs. I'm here to ask that you give serious consideration to the impact that the proposed twenty-five fifteen sixteen budget has on these valuable programs. As submitted, the budget fails to provide full funding for one of only two support staff positions, and less than one-half of the money is required for the needed and long-awaited Horticultural Agent for the county. From personal spirit, I can tell you that the ability to be effective in your job is in really a direct proportion to the level of support provided within a given organization. You can't respond meaningfully to a client's needs when you are repeatedly answering a phone. And this, I think you would understand from your own reality of your daily activity. As proposed, the budget provides less than one-half of the amount required to maintain the Support Specialist position and makes therefore an inevitable reduction in the staffing of about fifty percent, which we think is a really draconian cut. The Extension Office will be left with only one full-time employee to provide all of the support services required by the county director, agents, volunteers, and community members. Managing the general office process from early morning often until well into the evening, and the phones of which I mentioned earlier, as well as a full range of other responsibilities on a daily basis, you would have to agree that this is an unmanageable assignment for one person to achieve. The NC State Cooperative Extension has limited its funding for support positions to one per county across the state. This doesn't reduce the community need for services and assistance by half, but it does however assume that each county, in the discharge of its responsibility, will find ways to assist in meeting the resulting challenge. The budget submitted by the Extension Director requested one hundred percent funding for this Support Specialist position, retaining staffing at a level that has existed now for about quarter of a century. May I also speak to the funding need for the position of a Horticultural Agent here in Lee County? For almost three years, we've functioned without that expertise. NC State Cooperative Extension now requires, as part of its reorganization, that the Horticultural Agent be shared between two counties, providing, therefore, each county to provide forty percent of the funding and twenty percent to come from the university. However, may I just finish, I'm gonna finish. However, adjacent counties have declined to do this job share, which puts the responsibility fully back on Lee County to meet that need. So while I understand the difficulties you face in determining your budget priorities, and I respect the integrity that you bring to that process, we do ask however that you consider in your choices that you keep in mind that while there are things that are required by statute, there are also things that you do because they're the right thing to do for the community that you represent. Properties that are improved increase in value, and that value translates into revenue ultimately for the county. So we're asking please to restore the full funding for the Support Specialist in the proposed budget and to have the wisdom, please, to provide us the eighty percent funding necessary to bring a Horticultural Agent back to Lee County. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Pat Banville. I live at eighty-four Traceway, Sanford, North Carolina. And I've been a Lee County resident for ten years and a Lee County, North Carolina Cooperative Extension Master Gardener Volunteer for four years. North Carolina Cooperative Extension provides practical education you can trust to help people, businesses, communities solve problems, develop skills, and build a better future. I'm here to encourage you to reinstate the funding for the Secretary position to one hundred percent and the Horticulture position to eighty percent in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget. As Master Gardener Volunteers, our job is to support and facilitate programs planned and implemented by the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Horticultural Agent. As you know, we've not had a full-time, we've not had a Horticultural Agent in the last two and a half years. Sharing an agent with an adjoining county is not feasible because our surrounding counties have recognized the importance of a Horticultural Agent for their residents and are fully funding that position. I question why our county manager has not seen the same importance for Lee County residents. According to a recent survey conducted by the National Association of Landscape Professionals, of those responding, ninety-one percent who live in the south are most likely to have a yard or landscape. Of those, eighty-one percent say that the yard, upkeep, and care is important to the appearance of their homes. Millennials are highly interested in gardening and greening, green spaces. This interest in the appearance of their home and neighborhoods will lead to increased property values, which in turn leads to increased tax revenue. Extension is there to help these residents with questions, problems, and any concerns they may have. Currently, there are programs in our county to promote healthy eating, fight childhood obesity, and encourage us to buy local. We have community gardens and programs asking us to spend ten percent of our food dollar with local growers and farmers. Many of these programs are enhanced by the programs implemented by a Horticultural Agent. Our community garden programs, which teach individuals, families, and children to raise safe, nutritious food, needs the coordinated effort of a Horticultural Agent. We had a booth at the farmer's market several Saturdays ago, and I was absolutely amazed and impressed by the number of young people, single and families, who were interested in what they could do to start a small backyard garden. This is our future for eating local. North, thank you. North Carolina Cooperative Extension offers something for every single resident of Lee County, from children to seniors, not just a select segment of our population. Lee County's motto is "Committed today, for a better tomorrow." I ask that you commit today to support Extension for a better tomorrow by reinstating the Secretary position to one hundred percent and the Horticulture position to eighty percent. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mildred Smith. I live at five oh two Richmond Drive. I am a volunteer with the Lee County Cooperative Extension Service. I serve as President of the Lee County ECA, or Extension Community Association. We are deeply concerned about the loss of the Second Support Specialist Position or Secretary Position with the Lee County Extension Service. This position assists us with data management of client contacts, registration for programs with the county office, such as the four H program and the ECA program, which have achievement programs, ladies' luncheons, district events, club work inquiries from our members and from families and youth. You may remember, we have things like the quilting clubs. We have leadership training. We have community service projects ongoing. And we need the Secretary to help us with certain things. If this position is not funded by one hundred percent, county agents will have to spend their time preparing, they will have to spend their time working on other things other than preparing for educational programs to meet people's needs and presentations. We feel that there will be other people we can reach. We can continue to recruit more people, and we'll feel more organized with a Secretary onboard. We hope that you will please don't not cut the quality of the programs as needed. We are requesting full funding for this Support Specialist or Secretary position with an additional fifty-five percent, which will make it one hundred percent funded by the county. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else to speak against the budget? And I guess we've had some people that have come in later. I know the weather, I haven't been outside in about six hours, but I hear it's not being very cooperative. If, if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor or against that didn't get on the sign-up sheet, you're not required to be on the sign-up sheet. We were just having that, you know, just for some order on our end. If anyone else would like to speak, or if there's anybody out in the lobby or in the wicker room that would like to speak, yes, ma'am? If you give your name and your address when you speak, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Myrna Rodriguez, M Y R N A. And my address is four one six Harvard Trace in Sanford, North Carolina. I am a four H leader, and also I'm part of the Board of the Lee County Extension Center. And I just wanna step up and, you know, ask you for the support of the positions and considerate the budget. Definitely, I moved fifteen years ago from Mexico to Sanford. And I started, you know, trying to do activities for the yachts. And two thousand eight, I know four H, that is part of the Extension Center. And I've been having such a much, I'm so proud of myself and what they do for the yacht community because I see, you know, the difference that these programs transform our yachts in the community. It's amazing how they stand up in front of people and talk. It's amazing, you know, how I've been in presentations with them. I've been how they achieve scholarships. And, I mean, I can see how good programs are for the community. On the other hand, you know, we have the agricultural programs. We have the EC programs, the quilting, and all the things that they do for the community are amazing. I honestly, I just wanna stand up and considerate the budget. We really, really, really need our Secretary, because she helped me a lot. And, and of course, we need, you know, the member for the agriculture because we need somebody to lead us and having, you know, good support on how to do the gardening, how to do, you know, questions about, you know, animals, question about, you know. I saw people coming in and say, "I have this bug. What can I do for that?" And then I say, "Really?" So I learn a lot because where I'm from, we don't have trees. You know, I'm from the desert. So, the Agricultural Center has been helping me a lot, a lot. So, thank you for listening to me, and apologize for my strong accent. And just please considerate the budget. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I guess we'll close the public hearing for the proposed two thousand fifteen sixteen fiscal budget. And now, we'll open the public hearing for the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty. So we're open for that. Anyone to speak in favor of the Capital Improvement Plan? They're going the wrong way from the mic. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. Drive safely home. We'll let everybody move. Take care. Okay, anyone to speak in opposition for the Capital Improvement Plan?
Jim Womack, sixteen fifteen Boone Trail Road in Sanford. Again, I have this documented, and I'll leave this for you now. One of the points I was gonna make in my budget remarks was related to the Capital Improvement Plan budget. I see you're projecting a ten and a half million dollar wedge for the OT Sloan Park improvements, beginning in two thousand seventeen. And I'm told that the City of Sanford is also discussing a set aside of maybe several hundred thousand dollars for the same purpose. I think all of us wanna see the OT Sloan Park concept come to life over time. I think we'd be insane not to wanna see, you know, a magnificent park complex like that. You know, all of us would like to have that. But we're also told how much, that much of the project was gonna be privately funded when the concept was first put together. Your budget forecasts now that only about five hundred thousand or five percent of the overall cost of this park is to be funded by sources other than county taxpayers. That's a major undertaking for a county this small. A county and city, by the way, that's already on the nation's park-friendly cities. I mean, we already are recognized for how park-friendly we are in the county without this program. So, I think, you know, that kind of borrowing and spending on park projects over, you know, in the near term, especially with the looming elementary school projects competing for our limited capital resources, has gotta be questioned. I think if you think, if you think long and hard about where budget priorities are, constitutionally, we're required to fund the public schools. That's what we, that's, that's right behind public safety. That's our number one priority, is education. And I don't think anybody questions that. I mean, a large percentage of our budget goes to education, but yet, we prioritize higher education or community college bond projects a year or so ago above building the elementary school we all know we have to build in the near term. So we're already proposing to raise taxes seven and a half cents for capital, in part because of the capital requirements for the community college. And we haven't even started addressing the elementary school needs that we have. How can we Uh, how can we propose funding expansions of our parks with taxpayer dollars when we know we've gotta fund schools and school buildings? So I would just suggest that we need to take another hard look at our capital improvement program. And I would, I would encourage the Commissioners to sit down and, 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 again, come to grips with, you know, what our requirements are by the Constitution and what we really need to do by priority in the county. Education is, is one of the areas where we're really lagging right now. And that's probably where we need to focus our funding early on. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing on the CIP. And, um, just remind everybody, um, speaking to Mr. Womack's point, we are gonna have another budget workshop Friday here at two o'clock. For those that missed that, um, now I need a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?